Go ahead, and Mr. Johnson's, we're running late, so we're gonna go ahead and start the five o'clock work session. I like to call it the order. First thing on the agenda is review and discussion of proposed revisions to the Land Development Regulations of Newberry County, codified in chapter 154 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County. Mr. Schacher.
Well, good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
You too.
Yeah, great to see everyone, and I hate that Chairman Johnson couldn't be here. Of course, he had a commitment he had to be at, and then did say he's gonna try to join us as soon as he can, either during this meeting or at the 6:00 PM meeting, and I know Eric has sent him a link so that he's capable, when he's free, after his commitment, to zoom in and join us. You know, Katie and I laughed about this. We decided I would present this to you, even though she did the work on it, because I'm probably gonna be, she would create too much interest and excitement presenting it, because she's a better presenter than me, and we just wanted to kind of set the bar as low as we could at the first meeting of the year, and we'll try to peak, you know, when we get to November and make these meetings.
This is exciting, because the other ones, I don't know if I'd be able to hold back.
This could backfire, because this could be a very discouraging meeting for y'all, and you want to come to the rest of them. So, you know, we kind of started this process, I guess, of doing a little deferred maintenance on our ordinances back in September, I think it was, and, you know, the first thing we tackled was the road ordinance, and, of course, Katie was involved in that project, Josh Rowe, our Public Works Director was, they both were here for that. We got that queued up, because we've been using these 5:00 PM meetings to discuss, I think would be helpful for Stuart, we've been using the 5:00 PM meetings basically to discuss and vet things, particularly things that are complicated or take a while to do, and then we use the 6:00 PM meetings as a business meeting to actually adopt them. And so, you know, an ordinance like this, the land development regulations we're gonna do today, probably could very well require two work sessions, in which case, once you're comfortable with it, we'd be bringing you an ordinance to consider first reading on in February, and we just sort of have we worked through this process. So we did the road ordinance, and I think we've got third and final reading of that tonight, right?
Yes.
The second one we tackled, and that was chapter 91 of the code, the second one we tackled was our flood prevention ordinance, which I believe is chapter 152, and we've got second reading in public hearing this evening for that at the 6:00 PM meeting, and this was the third one. And this was probably the one that had the most volume and meat to it, and I guess we kind of saved it until last. But if you dial it back to when we were going through the comprehensive planning process, state planning law requires that all municipalities and counties adopt comprehensive plans, and that's basically the foundation for everything we do with land uses and land development, and we have to do that every 10 years, and it's basically like what we want to be when we grow up. This is what we are now, this is what we want to be. There are two tools, major tools, for achieving the goals in that plan. The first one is one that y'all deal with frequently, particularly when there's a lot of economic activity going on, because we've got zonings and rezonings, and that's the zoning ordinance. The second tool, though, are our land development regulations, and back in the day, they were called subdivision regulations, because you're primarily dealing with the subdivision of land and the development of that land. And what these land development regulations do is they basically just set forth the requirements that have to be met when land's subdivided, and the infrastructure requirements with an emphasis on roads and the number of lots and the size of those lots. And then, you know, when you deal with things like dimensional requirements, whether it's setbacks and, you know, similar minimum lot sizes and that kind of thing, you deal with that in zoning. So that's kind of like, I guess, sort of the anatomy of this and kind of how it works. And so, what I thought we'd just do is just jump into the land development regulations, and like I said, I think Ms. Worch did a great job on this, and of course, she had a little bit of assistance from Cheryl Matheny, the consultant, you know, that we use on these projects, and I think they prepared a really good outline for you of the major changes. And, you know, when we went through the flood ordinance, there weren't as many changes, and it was a lot easier to do a side-by-side comparison, and it was also more meaningful to do a comparison. If y'all are okay with, we thought instead of doing a comparison, we would just jump into the new ordinance and just detail for you what's in the ordinance, and then also through the summary, just point out to you the things, the major things that changed, but not do the side-by-side. But you've got copies of the current and the proposed in front of you, so if you want to look at the current, it's there. So just kind of running down, in the summary, you'll see this in front of you, we had a category of general changes, and you'll see that what we tried to do is we just removed any requirements that were unnecessary or redundant. You know, we've got a number of other ordinances, a good recent example of that is the road ordinance that y'all will give thorough reading and approval to at the 6:00 PM meeting. And so, you know, if it's already addressed in another ordinance and addressed satisfactorily, we remove the requirements that were companion or, in some cases, may be even potentially conflicted. In terms of fees, we eliminated in the ordinance fees, because y'all have adopted, this has been the tradition of the county for a number of years, a uniform schedule of fees, and it's part of the budget process, and it is an addendum to the budget ordinance. And so, back in June, y'all adopted the fees for this fiscal year that we're in now, and I believe there's a copy of the fee schedule, or at least the pages of the fee schedule that have the planning, zoning, and land development related fees in them, and so that just kind of shows you what our current fees are. So when you hear references to the fees as we go through this, you'll find the actual amount of those fees in that schedule. We moved all the regulations from the definitions section to the appropriate locations. It was really, some of this was just sort of housekeeping and just making the ordinance as easy to follow and as organized as we felt like we could possibly make it. Design requirements related to roads, y'all probably remember, that was probably fairly excruciating, that we went over in chapter 91, there was no need to replicate the land development regulations, so much of the design requirements in the, we'll call it LDR, what we're doing tonight, in the LDR has been shifted to chapter 91, the roads ordinance, because so many of the design requirements related specifically to roads. There's a little bit of it still in there, but most of it now is in chapter 91, which y'all, of course, have already reviewed. We also wanted to make sure, you know, there are some cases where definitions and requirements are mirrored in the zoning ordinance, and we wanted to make sure that they are the same. And so, you know, concerted effort was to make sure those definitions are the same or at least congruent. So the ordinance is divided into six articles, and I'll just kind of jump in with article one, unless y'all have any questions at this point. But article one is just the general provisions, and you can see from a housekeeping standpoint that we just moved all of the, basically, sort of overarching legal requirements into article one, so they're in the same place, and it just gets into the authority, which is the, legal authority is the Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act. That's state planning law. They just put it in one place, it's in title six, chapter 29 of the state code, they did that back in 94. You know, what we're calling this, this is the Newberry County Land Development Regulations, which is consistent with how state law has labeled it. You'll see that it applies within the unincorporated areas of the county and within five of our seven municipalities. The two exceptions are the city of Newberry, they have their own land development regulations, and the town of Silver Street. The town of Silver Street does not participate in the Joint Planning Commission or the application of these regulations within their municipal limits. So those two, the other five do participate in it. You can see that what we're trying to do here, much like zoning and a lot of what we do from a planning and development standpoint, is we're just trying to ensure that our counties economically- economically viable, that it's stable. You know, there are some other goals like preserving open space, certainly safety, that we're focused on, and then we want, to the extent we can, we want to try to promote harmony in Newberry County, and that's what this ordinance seeks to achieve. You'll see that, you know, basically for development activity to move forward in Newberry County, that development activity has to comply with the requirements of this ordinance, and that means that not only are the requirements, do they have to be met with, but there's gonna be an interaction with our building and zoning department, and in many cases, specifically with Ms. Works, to ensure that that occurs. And there are applications that are filled out and permits that are issued, and, you know, when the steps that we're about to go over are not undertaken, then that has a chilling effect on their ability to get building permits and get CEOs until the ordinance is complied with. We've got kind of the standard language in there that, you know, if a court were to find part of the ordinance to be invalid, you don't just throw out the entire kitchen sink, it would kind of isolate that vulnerability and we'd get it corrected. You'll see that in terms of other ordinances where we potentially have conflicts, we don't believe that we do, but if there are any, that the more stringent provisions control, wherever they may be, and then when we have ordinances that are in diametric opposition with one another, that the provisions of those ordinances that are in conflict with this, because this would be the most recent enactment, are repealed to the extent of the conflict, and then this would be effective upon adoption by council. So article two, that's kind of the legalese. Article two gets into administration and enforcement, this is Ms. Works' area, but I think what was really beneficial with this revision is we've got some sort of visual aids now, and I think these charts are really helpful, and I guess the first section, what it does is it just goes over procedural responsibilities, then it shows the major players. The major players are our land development administrator, which is Katie, and if y'all are okay with it going forward, I may just say Katie, because land development administrators are mouthful. We've got the Joint Planning Commission, we'll just call it the Planning Commission, but it's a joint municipal county planning commission, and then county council, and you'll notice that, you know, when it comes to minor subdivisions, that Katie is the approval authority for those, and there are requirements that have to be met, and when those boxes are checked, she approves it. With major subdivisions and in those other areas that are in the chart, you'll see that her role is making recommendations to the planning commission. So she advises the planning commission. You'll see that the planning commission has a number of areas where they're the final authority. You know, most of, much of what they do is advisory to y'all, to county council, and of course, y'all appoint the members of the planning commission, but in the case of our land development regulations, they have some final authority. And so examples of that are major subdivisions, only major subdivisions, and for our purposes, that's generally speaking going to be a subdivision of land that is five lots or more. Now, there are some other conditions that could be met for those that are smaller than five, like is it gonna require new roads or drainage systems or water and sewer, but usually it's gonna be a subdivision of a piece of property into more, into five pieces or more. And when that happens, there are plats that have to be prepared, and those have to go to the planning commission for approval. So the planning commission plays a major role in that.
Do you still have the same, the laws as far as septic tanks are concerned?
So that you'll see when we get later into like the design standards, that if public sewer is not available, then septic would have to be provided by the developer, and it would have to meet all the specifications of, and I keep calling them DEHAC, but DES now, and that they would have to provide written certifications from DES that their standards are met. But if public sewer's available, then a connection would be required, and the developer would have to provide connections to each lot.
Okay.
And that would be true for water, too, or they'd have to furnish, or they'd have to provide for wells. So the planning commission, you know, has those plat, review and approval powers. You'll see that there are provisions in here for variances where relief is provided, and that's done at the planning commission level. You know, Ms. Works or Katie receives those in the form of an application and reviews them, but they go to the planning commission to approve, like a quasi judicial body. And kind of similarly, and that's just when they're granting relief for, we'll just say, call them unusual circumstances or conditions, mitigating circumstances or conditions, we'll get into the standards later. There are also provisions for appeals, and so, you know, Katie makes a decision, a developer or we'll just call him the applicant for the subdivision is aggrieved, well, they go to the planning commission for potential relief in the form of a request, an appeal. And then if they're dissatisfied with the outcome of the planning commission, they can appeal it to circuit court. So there's another layer of appeal. So the planning commission is, at least at our level, final with that. And then you'll notice that really council's involvement with it is you appoint the members of the planning commission, you appoint the county administrator who assigns duties to like Ms. Works or to Josh Rowe or to other members of staff, and then you also adopt these ordinances, like hopefully you're fixing to do with what's been prepared for you. And what council adopts of an ordinance, only council can change with an ordinance, so any amendments to it come to y'all. So you'll notice that your column's kind of bare, but you have the overarching authority and basically set the rules of the game, in addition to state law doing that.
So if a developer came in and went before the joint planning commission, and the planning commission shot down their plans because it didn't meet their requirements, that there was something they didn't like, then they can do, they can appeal it, and that goes to the court system, right?
It doesn't.
It doesn't come to county council.
That's right, it goes, that's right, it does not come to county council, yeah.
So we would just be involved with the amendments only?
That's to the ordinance, that's right, changes to the ordinance. Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And I think that little chart is really helpful, just to see that visually.
And the past, hadn't it come to us or not?
No, the only thing that's come to y'all have been text and map amendments to the zoning ordinance. You know, a map amendment is when y'all change the zoning designation for a piece of property. Text amendment is when you change regulations that apply to one or more districts and the properties that are zoned that way.
Okay.
Yep. And that's where most of our activity is, especially when the economy is humming, there are more changes, and you see more activity in them. And then we just kind of go with, kind of staying in that section, and in article two, you'll just see that we really break down all of the duties of the, those parties that are involved, you know, Katie's, Josh Rowe, the Director of Public Works, you know, he has a fair amount of involvement in this, because again, we're dealing with roads, and then also drainage issues. And, you know, that drainage, when you construct new streets, generally speaking, is gonna connect to drainage with existing streets or existing roads, and so, you know, Josh would come in in terms of those reviews. You'll also notice, and this is in section 16, Land Development Review Committee, I wouldn't say this is an informal committee, but it's one that, it's not like the committees where y'all appoint the members. This is one where we as a staff assemble an internal team and involve other stakeholders, like representatives of our utility providers and others to review subdivision proposals. And so they have an opportunity to review it, and they provide input to Katie, and Katie, you know, essentially incorporates their input into her findings and then provides that information to the applicant. And so this, this development review committee has a really important role, and I mean, this again is water, sewer, drainage, roads, fire, public safety, of course, you know, flood, land development, everything that's in Katie's department as well.
Would the school district be involved with that?
Yes.
We added that in the planning commission?
Mm-hmm, yep, which I think was a really good catch by the commission, yeah, and You'll notice, and, you know, sometimes we get into a situation where, you know, there are, you know, there are penalties, and you'll notice that this is misdemeanor, you know, the way misdemeanors work, the general penalty provisions of the county's ordinances would apply, jurisdiction in terms of the court is magistrate's court, and that's where that's adjudicated. But there are also some other remedies, you'll see that that's addressed in the ordinance, withholding permits is one, I think I already mentioned that, that, you know, you've got to, you know, follow these steps, and when you don't, you know, it has a chilling effect on projects. There also is the ability, and I wouldn't think this would be very frequent, where we can go to a court for an action, injunction is one of those, which would prevent further activity, and it could also require, depending on the type of order, that certain actions would be taken to mitigate the issues and to bring it in compliance.
Declaratory judgment.
Yeah, declaratory judgment. So there is the ability to go to a court of competent jurisdiction for remedy as well. You'll notice there's provisions in there related to complaints, and the filing of those, the fact that, you know, the cause and basis for the complaint has to be provided to us, and then, you know, Katie would have a responsibility to investigate that. And this again would be instances where a violation of the land development regulations have occurred without our knowledge, and then, you know, we would be called into action to address that. And then also it mentions in there, too, that, you know, Katie and her staff have ordinance summons authority, so they have the authority and they've been properly sworn in to be able to issue those summons to magistrate's court. You know, I mentioned to y'all that when we go in and amend this ordinance, that only council can do that, and before you do it, the planning commission either initiates it, or they review what's been initiated and then recommend it to you, or maybe even recommend against it, or recommend it but with some changes. But before y'all adopt it, there is a public hearing that's required, and that public hearing has to be advertised at least 30 days in advance in a newspaper of circulation. So there's a notice requirement and then three readings of an ordinance. So there's a procedure that has to be followed, and then technically, and we added this in the ordinance, if this were not to be initiated by y'all or by the planning commission, which would really be rare, I mean, even if we identified something, we would bounce it off of council and the planning commission so that it's really being brought by y'all. But if for some reason a proposed change to the land development regulations was initiated by another party, and then it was failed to be approved by y'all at the end, then for one year it couldn't be considered again, if it was substantially in the same form. I mean, there would have to be significant changes. But again, that would be really rare, that scenario would play out. You know, we talked a little bit about variances, and there are some standards with variances. You know, this is an area that you have to be really careful with. We deal with this more in zoning, where we have, you know, requests for basically relaxation of requirements in the zoning ordinance, it's not quite as common with this, but it does happen. And so the planning commission has some criteria that they have to follow before they can issue or grant a variance to the land development regulations, and, you know, unnecessary hardship is, I guess, the umbrella term you would use for that, but, you know, we have to make sure, they have to make sure whatever they do is not detrimental to, you know, the overall public health, safety, and general welfare, you know, that the variance is not gonna adversely affect the development of an adjacent property, you know, that it's justified because of topography or some other special conditions that are unique to that property, it can't be something that, you know, is very common in the county in terms of conditions for property, the development of properties. Needs to make, we need to make sure that, and the planning commission needs to make sure that the variance is consistent with the objectives of this ordinance, and that it's, you know, it's congruent with the intent and the purpose of this ordinance. There's some, also some other standards that need to be met, there's four conditions. One is that when they're considering a variance from a design standard, if it's accessed, we need to make sure that indirect or restricted access can't be obtained, you know, if you're gonna issue a variance related to the property being quote-unquote inaccessible, that there's no engineering or construction solutions, you know, that could mitigate the conditions. I mean, if there are, then you need to avail yourself of those, you know, before a variance is granted, that there's no alternative access from a street, like with a lower functional classification than the primary roadway, so I mean, maybe there's a local road where access could be provided as opposed to like an arterial, you know, that the property may front on. And also that like the developer themselves haven't created hardship. I mean, if those, any one of those exists, then really the planning commission should deny the variance request, and then they should explore those other options, the developer should, to get the access that they need to the property. And I've already mentioned appeals. So that's article two. Any questions so far?
When you're dealing with a variance, in the county, is there a certain number of feet that has to be in front and behind the individual house and on each side?
There are setbacks.
In the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, there are, and there are some footage requirements related to the access points, because, you know, some of the subdivisions are gonna have to have more than one, depending on the number of lots, and there's a spacing requirement for that, and I know there were some dimensional requirements for corner lots in there. Anything I've, and I know we'll get into some of these later in the ordinance, but off the top of my head, those are the main ones I remembered, yeah, and flag lots, too, limitations on the number of them, and how long the flagpole is and how wide it is, and, you know, some of that, but we'll detail those for y'all. Okay, so the third article, and just, you know, we really tried to, I think Katie did a really good job on this, just organizing this so that it's concise and easy to follow. The third, I guess, sort of section or chapter of this is article three, and this is really the submission and approval process, and I thought it was really helpful, this visual aid, it just, it just shows you, we've got two types of subdivisions. In the current ordinance, we have three, there's this one where we have certain situations where it's exempt from the ordinance, and that was like, eh, we need to get rid of that, you know, like court decrees, and there's some other examples. Let's just have minor and major subdivisions. And again, in most cases, the major subdivision, or the major subdivision is gonna be a subdivision with five lots or more. In some cases, it may be smaller than that, because it's got roads or water and sewer or drainage improvements that are necessary, but mainly talking about something less than five, something five or more, that's minor and major. And so what you see then, and I'm not sure what page that is, wrong one. Page nine, top of page nine.
Chart.
And it's in color, too.
Yeah.
You'll just see kind of how it works with a minor subdivision. You know, there's a sketch plan, it's optional for those, and you go straight from sketch plan to final plat, again, that's for, you know, one to four lots. Major subdivisions, there's a sketch plan, preliminary plat, and then final plat, and if they can't accomplish all of the improvements that have been, because major subdivisions are gonna go to the planning commission for approval, there are gonna be improvements that are required for the subdivision, let's just say roads, drainage, dedication of open space, you know, facilities, water and sewer. If the planning commission has signed off on the plat, then unless it goes back to the planning commission to amend it, then the developer has to comply with all of the conditions in the plat approval. In some cases, though, they want to move forward with transferring ownership of the subdivision, individual lots or the entire subdivision. The only way they could do that without having constructed all the improvements, and it would be, we'd have to consent to it, it's not like they just automatically get this, but they would have to go the route of a bonded final plat, and then we'd go through a process, and it would really mainly be Katie and Josh and potentially consulting engineers that would try to determine, okay, we see what the developers' engineering and cost estimates on that, the improvements are, we would do our own analysis of that, and then we would require a financial guarantee, and that's the only way that we would allow transfer of the property if all the improvements haven't been built and certified as having met all the applicable standards. So that's the difference between the final plat and the bonded final plat, but you can see that's after preliminary plat. So Katie makes the determination on the type of subdivision, and again, usually that's gonna be really easy, it's gonna be the number of lots, but in some cases, it's gonna be her evaluating, well, what are the going to be her evaluating, well, what are the, you know, infrastructure requirements of the subdivision? And, you know, if they're significant, that even a small subdivision may have to meet all the requirements of a major subdivision. And then also, you know, sometimes you get into this and it changes. And, you know, started with this number of lots, and then this many lots, and now all of a sudden, we want to do this many. There's more lots. Or, oh, we've got additional improvements that are necessary. And that could trigger a reclassification. And she would make a call on that.
But it could be if you had, like, seven lots, but they were already on a, right along one road that's already there, and they're all doing their own well, and septic, you could have seven, and that could be, could that be like a minor, if there's no other improvement?
Only if them lots were five acres or more.
Five acres or more.
So if they were one acre lots, it would still go to the planning commission.
Okay.
Yep. And so that falls under, and this is page nine, minor subdivisions. You'll see it's in subsection B there. So for individual plats for land division, you know, if it's a combination of platted lots, and the total number of lots is not increased, and the resultant lots meet all of our standards, well, then that would be classified as a minor subdivision, and you go through the minor subdivision process. Like Katie mentioned, if the division of lands into parcels that are five acres or larger, and there's no new streets involved, well, then that would be a minor. If there's a combination of lots of records and no new street or change in existing streets is involved, that can be classified as minor. And then properties, and this used to be the exempt category, properties transferred by will succession or forced division decreed by a court or some other judicial authority, or transferred by tax sale. Those used to be the exempt category. They're now minor. So they would go through this sort of lighter type of process. Okay. So when it comes to minor subdivisions, and this is section 27, so no site work can begin and no building permits can be issued until the minor subdivision plat is approved and recorded. So that would be Katie and her department doing that. And in terms of the submission and review procedures, that's subsection A, there's five copies of the surveyed plat that have to be submitted. There's an application on a form that we provide that would have to be filled out. There's a fee that's paid. Again, that fee, y'all have adopted that in your uniform fee schedule. We don't require a topo survey unless the public works director determines that it should be required. But in most cases, a topo survey would not be required for a minor. Katie has at least, has no more than 15 days to act on an application. So when she gets that, of course, you know, she's turning them around as quickly as she can. But she has 15 days to do that. There is a provision in the ordinance, though, where the applicant can consent to giving us more time. And so that kind of sort of broadly applies. But, you know, what she's striving to do is to get that done within the timeline in the ordinance, which is no more than 15 days. In terms of the committee we mentioned to y'all, reviewing these proposed subdivisions, when it comes to a minor, she just makes a call on whether or not that's necessary. And in a lot of cases, it just, it wouldn't be. It would be with majors. So she makes a determination on whether or not, you know, to assemble the committee to review it. But even if she deems it unnecessary, if there are any new driveways that are connecting to a public road, then Josh is going to be involved with that. So the public works director is going to be involved in the process. Once Katie, you know, reviews, you know, makes sure that all the requirements in the ordinance are met, every box gets a check, she approves it and notes that on each copy of the plat. And, you know, we keep a copy, and the developer receives a copy. If it's a denial, then Katie's got to prepare that in writing with all, with the reasons for the denial. She signs it, either mails it, or hand delivers it, and has to do that within five days of her decision. And then if there are any modifications that are necessary to obtain approval, she would note those so that they know what they need to do to get the approval they need. And again, we would keep one copy of that and return the remaining copies to the applicant. Now, there's an additional requirement for her related to minor subdivisions, because, you know, these aren't going to the planning commission. It's just the major ones that are. And so she's got a monthly report that she prepares, and that's required in the ordinance, that shows the approvals and denials of minor subdivisions for the planning commission. So they know what's going on. And that's just something she does monthly. And, you know, most months, they meet. So that would just be part of their agenda packet, and they have an opportunity to review that activity. And like we talked about before, decision, her decisions related to minor subdivisions go to the planning commission. And then if the party is still agreed, they can further appeal it to circuit court. So that's really the appeals process. Any questions related to that? Okay. Well, there's some other plating actions. You know, we kind of mentioned some of these, and the fact that they used to be in an exempt category. So let's just kind of hit, maybe it's just some of the highlights of these. Because some of these don't fall under the definition of subdivision. And these are something that Katie would have, again, 15 days to review, and then provide her feedback to that party of approval or denial. And then, you know, in terms of a plat that she's approved, the, it's got to be, you know, once it's approved, they've got to, they've got to record within 45 days, or it's null and void. If it's null and void, then they have to go back through the process. So a plating action by court decree, decree, in these cases, the, you know, Joni may request that the court allow Katie to review the plat in order to advise the court, basically on whether or not the plating action that's part of this potential decree meets the standards in our ordinance. So that would be something that's not a subdivision, but we would have some land development activity that would fall under this ordinance. Boundary surveys and resurveys, and lots of record, you know, basically, no new lot boundaries, in this case, have been added, deleted, or changed from a previously recorded plat. You know, the boundary survey has to meet the standards in the LDR, and the survey must provide surveyor certification that the plat is a platted lot of record, that the survey was undertaken to settle a property line dispute. And so it would need to be signed by all of the affected parties. It would also reference, and this would be for resurveys, the plat book and page numbers. If it's a new survey where there's just a written description like on a deed, and there's no plat, then the deed book and page numbers of the recorded lots would be referenced in it. Estate plats and family transfers, those would be renewed, and they've got to follow all the same requirements of the, of minor subdivisions. Combinations of lots, this is where an owner wants to combine two or more lots into, like, an equal number. But usually, it's a fewer number of parcels. They got to meet all the standards of a final plat in the ordinance, and the survey must also show the common lot lines. And those would be dashed, like those common lot lines that are going to go away because you're consolidating lots. And it would need to be labeled deleted upon recording. We would need a certification also that all of the parties have agreed to the combination, you know, of the affected properties, all those owners agree to it. That the water and sewer authority or provider has signed off on the plat for the combination. They've approved it. And then the combination has to meet all access requirements. And this would be current and proposed access to the property. And that would need to be shown on the plat. Lot reconfigurations is another category that falls under this section. This would be an alteration of lots where a lot line is changed from what it is provided on a previously recorded plat. And so we'd want to see those common lot lines to be deleted, and they need to be labeled as such and dashed. That the owners, all the owners of the affected properties have signed off on it, agreeing to the combination. Similarly, the water and sewer is done likewise. That the current and proposed access is shown on the plat. And that portions of the lot affected by the reconfiguration, those have to be clearly identified. The, you know, the parcels that'll be combined, they've got to be clearly indicated. And then you'll see, we've got some other categories, like mortgage plats, land contract sales parcels, lease parcels. Easements, I mean, easements have to be clearly delineated with dash lines. We would want a statement on there, too, that this is not a subdivision. It would identify the entity responsible for owning and maintaining the easement. That's something that we want to see recorded, you know, on the plat. And all the affected property owners have to sign it. Wetlands delineations are similar. In this case, it's the Army Corps of Engineers. So we want to see the approval letter. We want to see the SAC permit number on there. And we want it labeled, too, that the purpose of the plat is to delineate jurisdictional wetlands of the Army Corps. And then as-built record plans. And so this would just show all existing structures, the distance to the property line, square footage of the structures, required setbacks are met, street locations, you know, with centerline stationing and curb data, street centerline elevations at 100-foot intervals, drainage structures, drainage pipes, you know, the size of materials, the invert elevations, which is, you know, the elevation of the bottom of the pipe. You know, if it's ponds and lakes, the average surface elevation, because, you know, we want to make sure that the inverts, I think, are at least three foot above that. Water and sewer as-built information, as required by the utility, would need to be shown on there. And then another category is phasing plats. And so this really would be subdivisions that are going to be built in phases. And, you know, the planning commission has to, in all cases, that's going to be a major subdivision. So it's going to be in the jurisdiction of the planning commission. They're going to approve the plan and the plat. And so that would be, you know, another example.
I got a question about that. So you got a builder, a developer comes in, he wants to just do five lots. He builds those five lots. And then he goes right next door, he's got the land art, he divides it up in five lots, to try to circumvent going through the major category. Do we have anything that prevents him from doing that?
You run into this scenario.
A whole separate piece of property?
So if it's one tax map number, if it goes off the tax map.
Okay.
If he owns two different tax parcels, each one is five acres, okay? So essentially, TMS number one, he could divide five times.
And keep it minor.
And keep it minor. And he could also divide parcel two five times to keep it minor because they're two separate parcels. So if he was to combine it, then it would hit a major. But if it's two, we go off parcel, not ownership.
So he could buy, like, 50 acres, and then divide it up and have separate parcels?
Some of them play the game like that.
Okay, I'll just ask you.
Yeah. And that scenario does play out.
It happens.
I want to see, I know we got-
Typically, that's what will happen, if it's on a major group. If it's got to have an infrastructure, it's not.
Right.
We may not, I was hoping we could finish this article. We may not be able to do that in the time allotted. Let me get back to my place. All right. Okay, so preliminary plats, this I'll skip to, and this is subsection G. I'm on the next page. So preliminary plat, and, you know, when we look at the, again, we've got some visual aids in the ordinance, and there's some really good tables. And you'll notice there's, you know, all the requirements for sketch, and then preliminary, and then final, and then bonded final plats. And you'll notice that preliminary, that's the one that has the most stuff in it. I mean, you've got all the studies, and it's really kind of the workhorse of this entire process. And so, once a preliminary plat is approved, either, well, in this case, it would be by the planning commission for a major subdivision, it allows the owner or developer to proceed with site improvements, and to proceed with preparation of the final plat. However, none of the lots may be sold or transferred. You know, that's only upon final plat approval or us authorizing the bonded final plat. So, but there is a time limit. So the, in terms of the installment of, installation of improvements, the applicant has two years to complete over 50% of the improvements, or submit a final plat of all our portions of the subdivision for approval. So a clock starts ticking, you know, once that preliminary plat is approved. Now, the planning commission can waive the requirement, or they can grant an extension. And I would think typically, what they would do is they would kind of kick that can down the road until we get to a point where an extension is necessary, and then they would go the extension round. And then phasing, if the, if the subdivider's proposing to develop in phasing, the phasing plat has to include, be included in the preliminary plat submission. And it's got to be approved by Katie and the public works director. And then the subdivider has two years to begin construction of all approved phases in the preliminary plat. Or they've got to resubmit to Katie for further review and approval. So they would have to, there's at least going to be another interaction on this, and then coming up with a game plan for dealing with that. In terms of appeals, you know, we, same appeal process that we've talked about. And then I guess, you know, just the effect, this is subsection K, the effect of a preliminary plat approval. You know, basically, once that's approved, the owner may proceed with complying with other requirements in our land development regulations, constructing the improvements, they can go, he can get started in building roads, other infrastructure, and begin preparing the final subdivision plat. But, you know, approving the preliminary subdivision plat, that's not final approval. So, I mean, there's this additional step where it has to be approved. And so there's a later process that they'll have to go through. And that's, that's in the next section, actually, of the ordinance. So it's not a final approval. But it is the bulk of the analysis that's required for a subdivision is at the preliminary plat level. And so that takes us to section 30. But I see, you know, that we're at the 15-minute mark, and, or actually, that's a little slow. So we're at 5:48. I imagine y'all probably want a little break.
Probably need to-
Yeah.
Cut it off there.
Yeah.
We will continue at the next.
I think, I think we got enough of it done where we can finish it at the next.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I told you. We wanted to set the bar low.
Good information, very good information. Well put together. Thank y'all. Any questions, comments, about anything we've heard, seen?
Thanks, Katie and Jeff, for doing, putting together a good package and-
Excellent, excellent work.
Excellent presentation.
As always.
Answering all our questions.
Yep. All right. With nothing else, we will, I will, I'll give a motion, I guess. We will adjourn the 5 o'clock meeting and get back with you shortly. We need a motion, we need a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Sees, seconded by Mr. Reader. All in favor?
This question.
Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.
It is just after six o'clock, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Chairman Johnson, I think, is joining us online.
I am here, sir. Our policy says that we have to identify why I have a testifying in court case in the ERMO and I'm disbelieving ERMO and blame Mary Wilbar who was a treat at five o'clock, six o'clock.
I am sure.
Trying to get out of here.
God bless you and be careful. So we have Chairman Johnson online with us. And with that, I'd like to ask the Honorable Mr. Leon Fulmer to lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Absolutely. Bless him. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight as your humble servants, humbled by the blessing that you bestowed upon us, the gift of your Son in this past Christmas season. Please help us all to use him as an example of the way we need to live and the way we need to love. Thank you for the many gifts you bestowed upon us. Please forgive us for our many shortcomings, for they know that they are many. Please allow the decisions we make tonight to be beneficial to our citizens of Newberry County, but most importantly, pleasing in your sight. For these and whatever else you see that we may need, we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal and strong.
All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a privilege to have so many people here in attendance. It's a good way to start off our first meeting of the year. We will start off with the oath of office. We will turn it over to our attorney to handle.
I'm doing the oath of office.
We're going to turn it over to the judge instead. We'll pass up the attorney for the judge.
We'll say for the record, Chairman Johnson's not before my court right now. Which is a good thing.
So we will proceed with taking the oath when the judge is ready.
And I also wanted to say, just for the record, I was at a swearing in ceremony yesterday for the sheriff's office and Judge Griffin did the honorable in swearing in at that time.
So Chairman Johnson has already taken his oath for the year? He just did it there. Very good.
We need circle yesterday, Chairman Johnson, Chair Fulmer, his entire staff.
Very good.
I've got a reflect, I don't know how many times I've done this. I didn't think I'd do it more than once. I just made it more times.
There you go.
All right.
Mr. Fulmer, I think you're up.
Okay.
I need you, also Mr. Smith, who else? Oh, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
All right, now, I've been a different place. What's y'all's preference, individual or group?
Do I use group? Hmm? Another group? Be great.
All right, these spouses, look a better house.
For better.
As a broker.
Absolutely.
Please join us. All right, the spouses can be on the party's left, please. All right. Gentlemen, please place your left hand on the boughs, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Are you solemnly square?
I am solemnly square.
Then I am duly qualified.
Then I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
For more constellations.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office to which I've been elected.
The office to which I've been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
And protect.
And protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thor calling up your first name, congratulations.
Congratulations, Dave.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Just where y'all leave it.
All right.
All right, did y'all come out here?
Y'all forgot, we had all that time.
Y'all got time before y'all arrive.
Sign your life away. All right. Thank you, Judge. At this time, we will turn the meeting over to our attorney for the election of the chair for 2025.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I've been given the honor to conduct the elections for both the chair and the vice chair for 2025, and I appreciate that honor from council. It has been council's custom to use what's called the viva voce system, which is a voice vote. It's Latin for voice vote. And so, we're going to, I will ask for a motion to open the floor for nominations, and then, of course, we'll get the motion on the table. We'll need a second discussion, just like any other motion, and approved, and then we'll take nominations. And so, any member of council has the ability to offer a nominee, and we will start with the chair, and then we will follow with the same process for the vice chair. Okay? Even if we only have one nomination, we'll still conduct a vote, just so we have a record of that vote. Okay? It's not necessary, but it's preferred, and so that's the way we'll do that. So I would ask the Honorable Council for a motion to open the floor for nominations for the chair of this council for 2025. I've got a motion from Reverend.
Madam Moderator, I have a, I have a motion, please.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, we did get a motion from Reverend Scurry. So can we take you for a second?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to open the floor for nominations for the chair. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. And so that opens the floor for nominations for the chair of this council.
Madam Moderator, I have a nomination, please.
Okay.
It has been my deep pleasure to serve as chair of council for the last several years, and I have enjoyed it. It's been one of the greatest honors and thrills of my life. As most of you know, my life mental condition took an incredible turn for the worse in October of this year. We are looking at a long, long recovery process, and I feel like while I can still able to serve on council, that I am not able to carry out the duties of chair as it should be. Know that those of you that put your confidence in me in days gone by, that I did make this decision today, I made this decision in June 20th of 1987, when I did I do. And so, I would like to nominate Nick Shealy, who I've served with, who has shown incredible ability as a vice chair, and I think he would make us an excellent chair, therefore I nominate Mr. Nick Shealy as chairman of council.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? We have Mr. Shealy as a nomination.
I make a motion that nomination come to a close.
Okay. Mr. Reader made a motion that the nominations come to a close. Can I get a second on that?
Second, yes.
Mr. Sees, any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Nominations are closed. We would ask then that the one nominee, Mr. Nick Shealy, be voted on. All in favor of Mr. Shealy being the chairman of 2025 for this county council.
Aye.
Okay, you get the vote. Mr. Johnson, can we hear an affirmative or a negative vote from you?
I made a nomination, I would give a resounding aye.
I would think you would. Okay, that motion passes, and so, Mr. Shealy, you are the chairman of this county council for 2025. Congratulations. We will follow the same process for a vice chair, so I would ask for a motion to open the floor for nominations for vice chairman. I've got Reverend Scurry, do I have a second? Mr. Reader, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of opening the floor for nominations for vice chair. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, all right, motion passes, and so the nomination, the floor, excuse me, is open for nominations for the vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Carl Sees.
Okay, I hear Carl Sees from Mr. Shealy. Reverend Scurry, you put your hand up. Did you have a nomination?
I had Travis Reader in mind, ma'am.
Okay, so we have Carl Sees, Travis Reader. Any other nominations from this council? Okay, hearing none. Under viva voce, the nominations are voted on in the order they are provided. So we will vote first then on Carl Sees as vice chair, and then on Travis Reader. Okay, all in favor of Carl Sees for the vice chair position for 2025. Okay, I've got three, four. Mr. Johnson, are you not voting?
I am voting, I would vote for Mr. Sees.
You would vote for Mr. Sees, so we have four. I will read them for the record, Carl Sees, Nick Shealy, Stuart Smith, and Leon Fulmer, and Todd Johnson, in favor of Carl Sees. Okay, and for the record, the votes for Travis Reader for vice chair, that would be Johnny Scurry and Travis Reader for Travis Reader. So that would make Carl Sees the vice chair for this council for 2025. Okay? That concludes the nominations. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
All right. With the elections coming to a close, that will bring us to item number four on our agenda, the adoption of the consent agenda. Newberry County Council, meeting minutes December 4, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept the?
Sorry.
Mr. Fulmer makes motion, I have second. Second by Mr. Scurry, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Johnson?
I am in, yeah.
It is unanimous. Additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the addition, to accept this read?
Some more.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Item number six on our agenda is ordinance number 11-01-2024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 91 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County to adopt road and development design standards and specifications. This is third reading. Do I have a motion to accept this as a third read? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? Chairman Johnson?
Not anymore, sir.
You're in favor?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, all right, it is unanimous. Item number seven is ordinance number 12-01-2024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 152 of the Code of Ordinances of the County of Newberry to adopt updated standards for the reduction of flood hazards. This is the public, second reading and public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open. Seeing no one, no one will speak, I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Do I have a motion to accept this as a second reading? Mr. Sees makes motion, second. Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Item number eight is consideration of a motion to adopt the proposed 2025 County Council Committee meeting schedule. No motion to that? To accept?
Motion out there.
Oh, okay. Mr. Fulmer, second by Mr. Scurry, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. All right. Item number nine, consideration of a motion to adopt the proposed 2025 Newberry County budget calendar. Do I have a motion? Mr. Sees makes motion, second by Mr. Reader, any discussion?
I'll just point a couple of things out to y'all, so you just, you see those dates. You know, the budget calendar is really useful, because I think it gives you a breakdown of the process, who's responsible for what and when it's due by, and so there are some responsibilities, obviously, that council has, because it's your budget, and you have to approve it. And so I just want to point out to you on the calendar that the dates of, the proposed dates of council involvement are italicized, and you'll notice that, I guess, the heavy lift for council is March 25th and March 26th. I know that's back-to-back evenings, starting at 5:00 PM, if y'all are available to start early, like we do with our work sessions, where we'll go over the budget in its entirety. And then you'll notice that most of the other meetings are held in conjunction with our regular council meetings, utilizing these 5:00 PM work sessions that we do. There are two dates that are not only italicized, but they are in red font, and those would be optional, and that would just be in the event y'all feel that an additional work session or two additional work sessions is necessary to get the budget where you need it to be before you adopt it. And of course, budgets have to be adopted by ordinance, so there's three readings, and state law requires a public hearing before you do third reading. So, just wanted to point that out.
Very good, thank you for clarification. I should have slowed down a little bit. Let's talk about it a little bit. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
It is unanimous. All right, number 10 is the appointments. Anyone have any appointments?
I have one, reappointment.
All right.
I'd like to reappoint Patrick Metz to the Board of Zoning and Appeals.
All right, we have a, we have an appointment for Patrick Metz for Board of Appeals. Do we have a motion to accept? Motion by Mr. Scurry, second. Second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Johnson?
I, yes, I'm sorry, I just found my.
Okay, all right, it is unanimous. Mr. Metz, you're reappointed to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Anyone else, other than me? All right, I have one, Doug Hitt to the Board of Zoning and Appeals also, District 4. A reappointment. Do I have a motion to accept? All right, Mr. Sees makes motion, second, second by Mr. Fulmer, any discussion?
You're the motion, because you're the appointment. So Mr. Sees would need a second.
Okay, my bad. Any discussion? All in favor of Mr. Hitt being reappointed?
Yes.
All right, it is unanimous. Mr. Hitt has been appointed to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Good thing since he was elected chairman, the last meeting sounds like. All right, public comments, we do have one signed up for public comments, Ms. Lily Hunter. You would? Good to have you with us.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Honorable Counselor, and Clerk, and Staff. My name is Lily Hunter. I'm 71 years old, born and raised in Newberry. I live in the city, but my concern is my neighborhood becoming dangerous, so that concerns everyone. The last Sunday in December, around 9:25, I'm sitting on my sofa watching TV when I heard this boom sound, and I heard this tat-tat-tat-tat-tat-tat. And I don't know, I thought about hitting the floor, but I didn't. I waited a little while, and went and looked out at Bounder Street, and, you know, Newberry's finest, with the blue lights were there. So I waited a little while to see what was going on, and I thought it was safe to go out. And, but anyway, the subject I'm talking about today is my neighborhood becoming dangerous, and these young people with these automatic guns in our neighborhoods, and in jail, and back in our neighborhoods. This young man apparently had an ankle monitor on, so he should have been in jail. So I'm just here not to criticize the police chief, I talked to him, had a good conversation with him, not to criticize our sheriff, had a good conversation with him, had a good conversation with the mayor. I'm not here to criticize anybody, I'm just asking for help. You know, maybe we need security cameras in my neighborhood, maybe the law enforcement need more investigators, they need more forensic people to help them put these people in jail. But mainly, when we catch these folks that are making our neighborhoods dangerous, we need to put them in jail and keep them there. That's my opinion. My neighborhood had a shooting resulting in a death, probably maybe five years or so. A distant cousin of mine, young man, last name was Matt Morris. I was coming from volunteering at the opera house, and I couldn't figure out how to get to my house because of all the police presence there, because there was a crime scene right behind me. So, you know, this, I didn't grow up in a neighborhood like this, but it has become this, so I just want to point this out to you, even though I'm living in the city, you know, we all work together to try to figure out what is going on with our young people. What can we do? We need to do something, because two of those bullets penetrated a home that was two homes from me, penetrated my neighbor's stove, and penetrated their home. If they had been at the wrong place at the wrong time, they would have had a funeral in their family. And by the grace of God, they weren't in the path of those two bullets of, you know, like I said, this rifle, this, I can't remember the caliber, but anyway. When I went out to talk to the police about what was going on, there were multiple gun casings at the foot of my, at the end of my driveway. There were multiple gun casings where the fence opened, you know, for my neighbors, that we found out later, two bullets had penetrated their home. So I'm just here to appeal to you, what can we do in the county to work together to keep these people behind bars, so that when we catch them, we keep them behind bars, because it could be anybody in this room. You know, that bullet didn't have anybody's name on it, it could have been, you know, anybody, you know, any of your family. They just happened to be in my neighborhood. So that's my, that's what I want to ask today, you know, that we all work together to give the police force, who are doing a fantastic job with what they're doing, I have no criticisms of them, we just need to help them, give them all of the tools that they need, cameras in the neighborhood, you know, more inspectors, more forensic people, more investigators, whatever they need in their budget, you know, just think it out, and let's help them.
We certainly appreciate your concern, and I'm right there with you, I have concerns for our county as well, and we'll always do what we can to see what we can do to help.
Yeah, we've actually had several meetings on that same subject, with the sheriff, the police chief, and several other individuals, and cameras was the first thing that came up. And we actually need to do something, especially about the fact that those same individuals, they go to jail, they pay a fine, and they get out. And they only get out to do the same thing that got them in jail in the first place. So why are we letting them out? I'm not sure what it is, but we're going to have to do something, because our young people live by a different rule, and that's not the rule that we have here in Newberry County. So we're going to have to be able to process them and keep them there until they learn what's right and what's wrong. So if we need to meet on that subject, if we need to talk about it some more, if we need to bring people in, I totally agree, and I would like to be there.
100% agree. Anything we can do to help, this is our county. No, we want to stay safe, so by all means, we will do what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Anyone else, I saw we had signed up, anyone else have anything for council? If not, we will ask comments from the county administrator.
Yes, sir, well, just, I want to say welcome, Councilman Smith.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you, and it's great to see everybody. You know, we only had one meeting in December, and it was so early in December, I feel like we haven't seen each other in a long time.
Been missing you.
We need to introduce one another, you know, again to one another. I just, a few things I wanted to mention to you. One is that, you know, we're monitoring the winter weather that is approaching our state, and, you know, we're in the southern, I guess southeastern portion of the area of the state that's anticipated to be affected by it. We're, you know, we're under a severe winter weather watch, I think it's 7:00 AM Friday through 7:00 AM Saturday. Doesn't look like snow's likely at this point, but we are preparing for sleet, mainly in the evening hours, that's when it would pose the biggest threat to safety with the traveling public, and ice accumulation. And we'll have some decisions that we'll need to make when more information is available about the mulch operation that we try to keep open on Saturdays. You know, anytime, really, we have a lot of rain, that creates issues out there. We've had a number of trucks get stuck that we've had to pull out with a tractor and all. So ice would just make that that much worse, and then the convenience center sites, too. I mean, we're going to try, certainly try to keep everything open, and we'll keep y'all in the loop on that, but we're just continuing to evaluate that. We've got a meeting at 4:00 PM to look at the latest and make some decisions tomorrow. In terms of projects, some encouraging news on the Energy Efficiency Block Grant, the, most of the units that we need for that project are in, you know, the bid came in well below what we anticipated when we put the budget together, and the core of the project's going to be completely funded with the grant from the State Energy Office, and it's going to enable us, though, to deal with even more buildings in terms of replacing units, since I think it's 12 buildings in total, we'll be able to put new high efficiency, high energy efficiency, heating and air systems in. And for an organization like us that owns 77 buildings, hey, you know.
That's a lot.
That's 12 fewer, you know.
That's right.
So that was encouraging. You know, we also were notified that we got a $750,000 community development block grant to make improvements in Whitmire. These are downtown, but the purpose is to capitalize on the capital project, sales tax project, the city gym, and try to improve the area around that project. And we've identified a source of matching funds, and, you know, the goal, obviously, there would be to avoid any impact on our general fund to implement that project. So we saw that as a major. general fund to implement that project. So, we saw that as a major, an exciting announcement that we received in December. Another one is that we were awarded a grant from the Rural Infrastructure Authority. This was roughly $650,000 to extend water and sewer lines in the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park, our industrial park there. And we've identified a source of funding for that match as well. So, those are, I think, gonna be three really, really good projects for us that are almost entirely funded with grant money.
Great. That is great news.
Now, with the grant in Whitmire, would that include the tennis court?
Well, not the tennis courts themselves, but, but it could pave the way. We're actually trying to work with the town on some funding for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, we think there's a solution for those, too. And that's in the project area. So, if we can get that addressed in the gym and then do all of the improvements around it, we'll have a complete project, or a complete area renovation, kind of extreme makeover, yeah.
That would be great.
No better money than free money. Very good. Anytime we can get it. That's a great job. Great job. That all from Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Comments from Council? Let's start with Mr. Fulmer.
Well, I don't, I don't have a whole lot. Definitely want to extend the welcome to Councilman Smith.
Appreciate you.
Look forward to working with you.
Well, we're working with everyone, too. It's her.
Absolutely. Also, thank you to my constituents for re-electing me. I'm looking forward to another, another, or a official.
Eight full years.
That's right, a official, full term. So, anyway, it has been a pleasure this past year. Learned a lot. There is a lot of intricacies that go on behind the scenes, which state or with county government. And anyway, but I'm, I have talked to a lot of folks, got a lot of phone calls, and I'm anxious to hopefully keep moving in the right direction. So, anyway, thank y'all for putting up with me.
That's right. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. And for the first meeting, thanks for everybody for the support. I want to thank my Lord and Savior for the opportunity and the blessings. Like, thank you for my family and friends for their support. Couldn't have done it without you, encouragement. For the citizens, for the trust that you gave into me for this journey. Newberry is truly a special place. We've, I've lived here my whole life, generations, my family. Look forward to working hard for Newberry. I only want the very best. And Ms. Hunter's concerns, it concerns me, too. And so, I only want the very best, and so, we'll work hard for that. So, with that being said, God bless Newberry. God bless the citizens. And thank y'all all for the support.
Very good. Mr. Scurry?
We thank all y'all for being here tonight, especially our new attorney, being part of our voting in. Thank you very much. And we thank Newberry County for being here, especially our Clerk, Clerk, and Co. Thank y'all for being here, you and your sisters. And we thank the new Councilman, being part of us.
Thank you.
And we thank Nick Shealy for being our new Chairman. Close friend of mine. We spent a lot of time together. And Council always have pushed far to work together. And I know we've pushed far this time working with Nick and the rest of the staff. Thank all y'all for being together.
Mr. Scurry?
I'm Mr. Reader.
I want to congratulate Councilman Smith for being elected, as well as everyone else being re-elected. Because it's four deep, and I'm glad to see, see everybody here. I would also like to thank County Administrator and his staff for getting all the grants. That would definitely help Newberry County out, and I'm looking forward to see the results. I also want to thank all of you for being here. It's good to see everybody's smiling face. And please go out, get what you need, just in case the weather is bad, so you don't have to slip and slide across the road on Friday.
Get your bread and milk early.
That's right.
Mr. Johnson, you still with us?
Absolutely. I wouldn't miss it but a word.
All right, any comments?
Just welcome to Mr. Smith. What a blessing. We've known each other for a long time and have shared several times. And I look forward to serving with the dear girl in Christ, as I do with all of the rest of you. And so, I thank God for Mr. Smith. I look forward to serving with you. Mr. Shealy, I look forward to your grateful leadership and the days ahead. And having grown to know you and serving with you in the, in the last year has been a blessing. And so, I know you'll carry us to far better places than I could. And so, I thank God for you and Mr. Sees, and I appreciate y'all. And I thank God for all the blessing that he sent our way with the, the grants and all of those things. And then, lastly, on a personal note, some of you have made an effort to call and, and text me on a regular basis. And better than that, even if you don't even call, you'd be just grateful during these difficult days in my family. It just means the world to me. So, thank you for everything that's been done.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And we will continue the prayers. Vice Chairman Sees?
I'd like to congratulate Stuart, being elected, and looking forward to serving with you.
Looking forward.
I think we have a, we got a great team up here, and we've been working together. And I know you'll continue serving and helping us build a better team.
Looking forward.
And also, congrats to all the Councilmen that got re-elected for another four years. That's great. And our team working together. And also, our great attorney and administrator working together. And everybody come out tonight to, to be involved in the process because we don't know unless you come out and, and give your input. And just like Ms. Hunter came out and expressed concerns, what's going on in the, in the county and the city, and what we can hopefully come together and kind of address that. It's, it's been discussed. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out. And also, I'd like to thank Andrew for all his hard work over the last couple of years and supporting us as Council people, as staff, and, and doing things for us and arranging things. And he does a great job. I'm just looking forward to another great year. Thank you.
And I would like to thank all of you for being here as well. We're here because of you. We appreciate you putting us back in the office and hold us accountable. That's what we're here for. Councilman Smith, I grew up with you in church, now we're here together.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Looking forward to serving with you. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate all your leadership in the past and look forward to trying to carry on what you started. We'll work together as always. I think we have a great Council, and we work great together. I hope that continues for years to come. God's blessed us all. Let's, let's keep blessing him. So, with that, that's, that's all I have. Future meeting.
I just got a call from the Helen community. I want to thank y'all, County Administrator, and the rest of the Council for the sidewalk we have put in Helen area. The church that we have gained membership, people can walk to church now without walking in the mud. I want to thank y'all personally for the cooperation for the Brown Chapel Church. Just got a call in. They are listening to my community tonight.
That's excellent.
The Brown Chapel Church are backing us for being the sidewalk in Helen area. Thank y'all.
So, we got somebody listening anyway.
That's right.
That's good. That's good. That's great. All right, item number 14, future meetings. Newberry County Council Work Session, January 15th at 5:00 PM, Newberry County Council, January 15th at 6:00 PM. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Office is closed January 20th. Public Safety and Courts Committee, January 27th at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I can't do it.
You got it.
Motion by Mr. Scurry, second by Mr. Fulmer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
We are adjourned.